Hello, everybody. It is 6:30, so I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. We're so excited that everyone is here. And I know, looking out, that we have all of our seats taken. So Superintendent Hanson, could you share where our guests can go if they'd like a little bit more comfortable seating?
Yeah, if folks are uncomfortable and would like a little more space, we've opened up the library at Rock Creek Elementary, right across the parking lot, where the Zoom feed is, so feel free to join there.
Thank you. And then just a reminder, in order to meet in person, which we all are hopeful that we can continue to do, we have to abide by Washington State law. So please just make sure that you have your mask covering your nose and your mouth. So just that friendly reminder. And then we're going to move on to Agenda Item 1.02, which is our Board Directors and Attendants. We have all of our school board directors with us. And I see that we have several of our student board reps with us as well. We're going to have Machu joining us over the dais. Thank you for doing that. And then he's actually going to be leading us in our pledge. So if you could please stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are going to move on to Agenda Item 2.01, which is Action to Approve Our Regular Meeting Agenda. May I please have a motion to approve Agenda Item 2.01? Action to approve the regular meeting agenda.
I am going to approve our regular meeting agenda.
Director Miller motioned, and Director Williams seconded. Thank you both. Do we have discussion?
Madam President, I have an item for discussion. I have an inquiry as to an absence of an agenda item that per Policy 1114 typically would follow in the next regularly scheduled board meeting after a board member resigns and indicates that, upon receipt of a director's written resignation, the board shall discuss the resignation at its next regularly scheduled meeting. The board shall then acknowledge and announce the resignation. I believe in the past, we have had resignations that have had an explicit agenda item. I just, I think for public record, it'd be helpful to understand why that item is not present tonight.
Yes, and Superintendent Hanson, do you want to address that question?
Sure. 1114, the resignation was discussed at a previous meeting. I believe it was acknowledged through a communication put out through our Communications Department. Is that accurate, DJ? Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead, and I have a call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? Nay. The approval of Agenda Item 2.01, Action to Approve the Regular Meeting Agenda, passes four to one. Moving on to Agenda Item 3.01, Public Comments. Just as a reminder for everybody, each person will be given three minutes per topic to comment, and a maximum of 20 minutes per any one topic will be allowed. Speakers whose comments are less than three minutes in length may not defer their remaining time to others. If there are multiple speakers on one topic, speakers may be limited to points of view not yet expressed. Any person wishing his or her comment retained as part of the permanent record may submit a prepared statement to the Board Secretary prior to the oral presentation. The President may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement when it is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Comments and concerns relative to district personnel will not be heard in public, rather they should be directed through the complaints concerning school personnel or program policy 4220. Formal presentations must be scheduled with the superintendent in writing, no later than Tuesday noon, one week preceding the regular meeting. And per board procedure, we will not answer or respond to any questions posed by a speaker. We did have two public comments submitted prior to this meeting, and so Superintendent Hanson is going to be leading those last.
Yeah, absolutely. "To whom it may concern, thank you for your effort, energy, and thoughtfulness that has already been spent on behalf of the creation and adoption of an equity policy for the Tahoma School District. I appreciate very much the attention given to soliciting feedback and ideas from the various equity committees that are currently meeting within the district, as I currently serve on the Family Engagement Committee and was given the opportunity to brainstorm alongside my colleagues and community representatives to make suggestions. I believe the procedure draft presented this evening lacks action items and verbiage in the area of professional development. As a staff member in the district, I would like to see directives to the district that include ongoing and continuing professional development, as well as connection to the annual SIF plan and potentially to the TPEP evaluation process. In current addition, the procedure leaves too much space for a one-time professional development session rather than the continued work that is needed for this important change. Here's an example from the North Shore School District, which I believe includes specific language that accomplishes this goal. I would like to see the published revision of our Tahoma procedure include this language: Professional learning and growth. Create a plan for and facilitate the development of staff capacity and competency to utilize culturally responsive and relevant curriculum, teaching, and assessment practices, and discipline methods. This shall include providing staff with consistent and ongoing opportunities to understand the impact of instructionalisms, systemic barriers, and implicit bias. All staff will develop the language, skills, and capacity to respond to diverse student needs and backgrounds in culturally appropriate and effective ways. Staff will grow and foster an understanding of pervasive student achievement disparities that have perpetuated inequity and service in increasing individual and collective cultural competency and humility over time. Thank you for your consideration of this concern. Please feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions. I wish you a very fruitful and thoughtful discussion this evening. Jennifer McPherson." Moving on, a second?
Yes.
To the board, I want to take the opportunity to say thank you for all the hardworking staff that are continuing to keep doors open for all the students in the Tahoma School District with the ever-changing guidelines. I know this task is not that easy. As the doors continue to remain open, I took a moment to reflect upon the North Star, Tahoma Cares After Now, the five goals Tahoma hopes to achieve by 2025. These are pillars that we teach in our home, and we're grateful that Tahoma has also adopted these pillars. However, as I also reflected upon the resignation of Val Pegnelli, it seems as though there's a stark contrast between what Tahoma is teaching our children and what is actually being modeled at the school board level. Climate and culture. Being a welcoming community where all feel a sense of belonging and connectedness is a foundation for success. This is truly a foundation for any successful organization. Yet, Val Pegnelli issued a resignation because her voice was continually silenced. While maintaining a high level of integrity, she was continually silenced. High expectations. We want to reach our fullest potential, so Tahoma will continue setting high expectations, providing ambitious instruction, and finding new ways to help us learn and grow. In her resignation letter, I stated this: As a credentialed actuary and a financial professional, it is imperative for me to offer my authentic view with a genuine intent of mitigating risk to the system in order to focus our service on the students under our care over the long term. Our duties under law, under the state of Washington, is shared by each of us as board members. However, this does not mean that we each see these duties through the same lens. Over the term of my Tahoma School Board service, there were numerous occasions that had accumulated to diminish silence or ignore my voice, my perspectives, and my inquiries on behalf of our shared constituencies I am to serve. If Tahoma really believed in reaching its fullest potential, I believe it would welcome mitigating risks. It would welcome viewpoints from all angles. It would want to reach high expectations, and it would seek to find new ways to help them learn and grow. It would not seek to silence board members who are willing to express viewpoints that are different than theirs. It would seek to build origins and see what everyone has in common. Partnerships. We know that collaboration between staff, students, and families and communities will help our students achieve at high levels. If the Tahoma School Board does not partner within itself, how can we trust it partnering between staff, students, families, and communities? Equity. We believe that everyone should feel valued, welcomed, and supported in Tahoma. We will support all of our students in becoming future-ready. If the Tahoma School Board does not respect its own members, how can we trust that it values all students, especially those who they do not agree with? Wellness. We want to build a strong foundation for lifelong wellness, so Tahoma will help us learn how to handle big emotions, grow healthy relationships, and make responsible decisions. If the Tahoma School Board is unwilling to have tough discussions that are being initiated by its own member, how can we trust that they guide the school district in handling a society that continues to grow apart? To take a quote directly from the Tahoma School Board, the four remaining directors...
Okay, thank you. That's time. And then we will move on to our in-person guests. We have Stephanie Bennett, who is going to be talking to us about school policy.
Can you start?
Yes.
Thank you. I have a PhD in psychology specializing in post-traumatic stress disorder, and I see several constituents in this district. There is a growing body of evidence on psychological harm being done to children by mistreatment and abuse by staff and COVID policies that underscores the overwhelming reports of parents regarding emotional and mental damage experienced by their children. There is a plethora of peer-reviewed science informing us of the dangers and physical harm being done, but the lack of systematic tracking of various data for psychological trauma fuels the silent killers of suicide, PTSD, severe anxiety, depression, mental breakdowns, self-harm practices, and substance abuses. This is culminating into a catastrophic epidemic of proportions which remain to be acknowledged. In addition, mental health facilities are overwhelmed with youth in numbers never before seen and are unable to serve the demand. Grades are dropping significantly. Psychological terror and anxiety of displaying a sneeze or a cough is overwhelming students. Discrimination against a certain group of children in forced testing is not legal or lawful. The test-to-save policy is an offer and contract which has legal standing to be refused as it violates the Constitution, bill of rights, and ERG code. This policy is an outburst of investor funds received in exchange for following the quote-unquote COVID-19 policies set forth by the administration of the CDC, which violates children and their animal rights. There was a database previously available to the public to look at the amount of the $125 billion COVID funds sent to each district. It has since been taken down, which is an odd way to encourage confidence. In the spirit of transparency, we would like you to let us know how much money you receive and how it is being spent. We look forward to receiving that information in a public forum. The baseline epidemiological fact that there is no isolated COVID normality makes these tests meaningless, notwithstanding how dangerous they are with children having seizures, brain damage, severe headaches lasting for days, chronic nose bleeds, infections, et cetera. Children's safety is not assured, as Johns Hopkins University has confirmed they developed thermocryper technology to be vaccinated with the swab used in either a PCR or an antigen test. Additionally, it is confirmed the antigen test contains sodium azide, which is acutely poisonous. Let the record reflect, we do not comply with constitutionally protected rights of children being violated. No emergency usurps the Constitution. We ask to be provided with criminal law and/or a state statute passed by the legislator and voted into law or statutes by the people. Until then, we demand you cease and desist all COVID policies under U.S. Code Title 18, Chapter 13, Sections 241 and 242. And with that, I have some documents for each one of you.
And Stephanie, and for anybody else who's giving a public comment tonight, I just want to make sure that you know that if you have specific questions, we want to make sure that you get answers to your questions. And so, please, if you could send an email to Tamara Wheeler, I'm happy to give you her email address at the end of this meeting, but if you could send her an email with your specific questions, we'll make sure you get responses. So now we're going to move on to Dana, and I apologize, I'm not sure how to pronounce her last name. Is it Monaves? Yes, it's your turn.
I'm new. I was going to say, I've never been to one of these, I've watched them, but... So... My concern is the way that the children are being contact traced for COVID. My daughter goes to Tahoma High School, and I got a notice on Saturday that she was identified as a close contact. And I asked for documentation of where and with what. And they weren't able to answer that. I don't know if parents aren't asking, but parents need to know. What period was this in? I feel, and this is my feeling, that we were targeted, and my daughter was truly discriminated against because nobody else that she sat next to was given this notice. Nobody else, that she was only in two periods on the date she was told that she was in close contact, was identified. So why was my daughter singled out? It took me five... no. It took too many emails for me to go back and forth, and finally have to copy and paste and say, "I'm being ignored, you're not answering my questions." I appreciated that they finally responded and said, "You're correct, we're wrong. What can we do to make it up to you?" And I appreciated that. What you can do to make it up to me is have an even playing field for the children and for every parent to know exactly where they were in contact and how they're doing this tracing. My daughter was not exposed, but that she would have sat out because of their protocols, because she is not vaccinated and we're not going to get a shot. So I feel that we're being discriminated against because of your policy, and it needs to shake. So I'm asking that this be addressed, and that it's more transparent how you're choosing to identify and be very clear with the parents, because it also impacts me as a mother with six children, the five other kids that I have that are around my daughter, who supposedly was exposed, and she was not. So I would like that addressed, and I would like policies in place concerning children that are identified as being in close contact, because I know that I'm not the only parent who probably has had this happen when their child was not actually exposed. Thank you.
And then what's that, Earl? What's that, Earl? Actually, just need it up. It's Washington State law.
It's not a law.
Is it not?
It's part of our COVID protocol for our district.
So I'm here today to bring my case to you guys. I would have been a Tahoma parent, but I've decided not to enroll my children because this toxicity has spilled into every aspect of our community. And I want the board to find a way to get along. The fact that that is being pulled from the board is absolutely unacceptable. She should have been able to be collaborated with, and I want that to be happening more in this town. We need to all find a way to collaborate more. And I don't feel that that's happened. I'm not the only parent that's decided not to come to Tahoma. I'd also like to bring up something that came at the last morning board meeting that sounded like there was some kind of certification for FEMA. Why is the board needing certification, or anybody needing FEMA certifications? That's concerning to me. Why would FEMA need to be involved in our schools? Why is that happening? Very curious. I'd like more details, and I'd like it publicly available as quickly as possible. I yield my time.
Thank you, Melissa. Nancy DeLiso.
I'm here to speak too about the importance of focusing on teaching, more specifically about teaching the basics, reading, writing, and arithmetic. We used to be in the top five. In 2022, we are number 13. We are one of the best. We were one of the best. TSD is not looking up to the standard parents expect, and that needs to be addressed. In place of the basics, I feel too much emphasis is placed on CRT. You say this is taught in Tahoma, but it is for teacher protection. This is divisive and confusing to kids who are learning how to navigate relationships, friendships, misunderstandings, and disagreements. These kids need to learn how to work together, compromise, something they're not seeing a lot in the community teachers, from the community teacher staff, upper grades, and guest parents. My way over the highway is awful divisive. It's an awful divisive way to handle disagreements, but many parents see that for sure. You insist on covering this in school, then make it an honest dialogue that doesn't divert discussions to always accuse students of hatred. Communicate inclusiveness and acceptance no matter what you look like, in spite of what you look like. These, ah, sorry. These special committees force feeding and shaming people into accepting visual differences should be offering tools to guide them to similarities that foster good discussions. Anyone that knows me knows that I accept everyone, no matter their race, gender, whatever. I teach the case to my kids the same. We need to get to know a person with an open mind. Yes, sometimes you don't get along, and that's okay. I hate that people should be seen first at whatever their outward appearance is. It's okay if we disagree or aren't friends, as long as we all respect each other. What happened to celebrating our differences, to be proud of who we are, of us as we are? We should all be able to celebrate ourselves. I can't help but wonder how you dare implement a program that teaches our children to judge their peers on what they look like rather than who they are. I believe in equal rights, not special rights, and that's what this crazy push in school system has come to. This hits me personally, because my daughters are drop points applying to colleges because of quotas maxed out on the number of agents accepted in that school. After they've worked their butts off to go to college, they face the fact that that may not happen because there are reasons why they're to make room for someone else based on their status. Where's the equity or equality in that? I have a senior this year in level learning accountability for pushing themselves has deteriorated. It's not in her best interest to lures KBY. She and all students need to be challenged, and I feel that's not happening. My older daughter was at the top of her class, AP Student Honors, et cetera. At graduation, she was much more prepared for college in comparison to my senior this year. On paper, she was amazing, and one would think she could get into any college she wanted. Unfortunately, that's not exactly true because of quotas. The statistics are here, found on the public school review site. I gave you a copy of it on the bottom of page. Unfortunately, math is 68% of the key is 76% proficiency in Tahoma. This is where the focus should be, not equity.
Key passage? Are you saying this with this... yes, this has...
This is me. Key passage. Okay, I came here a couple months ago. I talked about transparency and the way we were separating and segregating our kids from vaccinated versus not vaccinated. More medical studies have come out, luckily we have two more tonight, from someone with the title, and they're all spreading it. You guys are following DOH, I get it. You guys feel comfortable, you're dividing this city. The school district needs to wake up and realize you think you're being progressive, you're helping to divide. Everyone's spreading it, and vaccines aren't doing anything. So transparency would say, let's all start being future-ready. Let's make different protocols that actually pay attention to science and not all being being pulled by the state. We're falling, but we're being much pulled by the state. That's because there's a paycheck, which is already aggressive and right. Transparency moves into VIP. Any person working with children in this district that has decided a vaccinated child is VIP over the rest of these children should not be around children. You should not even be using the word doctor behind your name. You are not a doctor, you've got a doctor in something. The fact that we don't have our adults under control in this district, and we're fighting for inclusiveness and equity, and you created a horn, and you have a lady who's running in who's not being transparent. You're telling the CRT isn't here, you're teaching it to the teachers.
President Halliwell, we need to be careful of complaints against employees.
I haven't said anything. I haven't said anything to you. I haven't directed this towards anyone. I'm telling you that you guys think you're moving forward in progression, you're creating more divide in this city. I understand, we all have good hearts. It shouldn't be who has a heart, who doesn't have a heart. But I, we are going down the wrong path. The further we get into this, it is going to demolish all of our children. Enough with this segregation. Stop talking about everybody's equity and everybody's skin color. You're bringing segregation back in the hopes of being progressive. It is not healthy for this town. And I am tired of getting emails saying that my kid might have to test them to stay here. He's not getting a vaccine. Soon I said this also, the vaccine stuff's going to come out, and everybody's going to realize we're spending something on children's health and on these kids. It was never having to do with them. They were saved from the beginning. That's the only truth we've known from the beginning. I am asking you to be transparent, pay attention to the children, and stop dividing them at these young ages. It's confusing them, they're watching all of us. It just has to stop. You have to start being transparent, and you have to start making our decisions for our district. Stop with the paycheck.
I know, we have another section in this meeting that is assigned to school board recognition. Did you want to save your comments until then, or do you want to come up and speak now? I know we have several city council members who are with you, so I want to be respectful of your time.
Yeah, we'll do the board during that time.
During that time? Okay. So that is the end of our public comment section. And now we will move on to Agenda Item 4.01, which is our administrative report. Superintendent Hanson, do you have an administrative report for us tonight?
It's a pretty long agenda that we have. I think I'll hold my comments for the items.
Thank you. Agenda Item 4.02, Student Board Representative Report. And Machu, do you have a student board rep report for us?
Yes, I do, and I will try to make it a briefer than we had planned. So, okay, so starting off, the student board report. Tahoma High School students had a nice and chilly welcome to the morning at a fire-worn cabin at the high school this morning. Students haven't really received much information of what happened there, maybe saw a fire just coming, at least I did, on the east side of school. So it might not come out that we know what happened there, but students had a nice chilly welcome to the morning. In terms of high expectations for students today, finals week tomorrow is the last day of finals for students in second and fourth period. I know that I have a physics final, and my brother is sitting at home trying to study. I know that for many students, that's the same situation as we all throughout this semester. And moving on to COVID-19. I think that students in general are looking for a bit more information. A week or two ago, and also this specific day, we received basically the first email sent by the school specifically addressing COVID-19. We've received wellness emails that sort of lumped in COVID-19 with general mental health. This is the first one addressing the impact on academic spec COVID-19 has had, especially for students who have had the quarantine or have had missing teachers, which is happening more often recently. So that students are looking for a bit more information when it comes to the impact that COVID-19 is having on their education, especially as we head into the new semester and as we look for, and as we're looking at our grades at the end of the semester. That is the end of the student board report.
Thank you, Machu. Moving on to Agenda Item 4.03, Board Director Reports. And Director Pegnelli, we'll start with you.
Thank you for your report, Machu. Madam President, I'm going to start with another book review. And I know we have a lot to talk about tonight. This one will be quick. So as someone who knows me and knows me well, and who knows that I like a quick read, this one is called "The Hummingbird's Gift", and it's by Cy Montgomery. Not only would you, if you took two hours to read this book or less, would you learn a lot about hummingbirds, but you'd learn a lot about the human race and the care and love and feeding that it can give to tiny little human beings. This is the one line that I would share with you. "But while most birds are made to fly, and the urge to fly is instinctual, flight itself must be carefully and painstakingly learned, a task of impressive complexity." That reminded me of our work on the board and in our district. Second, I want to share meetings that I've attended since our last regular board meeting. I had the opportunity yesterday, our transition kindergarten started for our pre-K at Shadow Lake and Lake Wilderness. I went towards the end of the day, saw the last recess, and then going back into the classroom and getting ready to go home. So I'm more curious about how those students were today, because yesterday was a big day, they were very excited, and very worn out. And I was really impressed by the collection of adults and students who showed them care and welcomeness in those two schools as I observed them in my respective half hour at each location. And I want to thank student board rep Aditya Rana for joining me at Lake Wilderness Elementary yesterday too. It's really, it was touching to see you working with the students while we were there. I also want to share my personal experience since I announced my resignation on January 11th from the board, because I feel like, in that context, I may not have been explicit enough in my remarks, and also want to be transparent with the community to which I serve. So those of you who may recall, I post-dated my resignation to February 28th of this year with a willingness to retract that resignation if we were able, as a board, to move forward with discussions and resolutions on a number of different items. I will continue to serve until the... to serve until that date, and it's very important for me that the public understand the process that has taken place. I mentioned earlier on an agenda, typically our public would see an agenda item explicitly on the agenda tonight announcing that resignation. Last week, as Superintendent Hanson mentioned, there was an item on the agenda, however, the public would not have observed it explicitly. It was a line item on the classified personnel report that indicated a resignation of an elected official. So I am continuing to serve, but I am your elected official. I do want to also share, because I think it's important, the experience that I had, that I did not receive a phone call or an outreach from our superintendent. I did not receive outreach from any board members, save for one with some very shared time and one another, one another one whose our schedules would not collaborate or not coordinate timely. I do want to apologize to my board members, my fellow board members. It was never an intent to cast ill will on you as individuals. I'm very much about process, not people, and really worked to make my resignation about process, not people. In particular, the two most recent board members. We have not had much of an opportunity to work together, right? So in no way was it intended that it be reflected pointing on either of you. So I want to express my apologies there. I will also offer that that personnel report that was presented last week did pass by a majority of vote of your board, four to one, and I was that dissenting vote. But it is a majority of vote, and I continue to work through what that means for me and my ability to retract my resignation should that become viable. I am open to discuss more freely with anyone who would take interest, and I'm happy to do that. Relative to the public comments tonight, I want to say I'm a bit speechless. I do want to work on behalf of our community, whether I'm sitting at the DIAS for your school or otherwise, so you can count on that. Thank you very much, Madam President.
And Director Miller?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to report on a couple of things since we last had a meeting. Also was able to observe the transitional kindergarten and welcome our newest Tigers and Wildcats and the Tohoma families. Really excited to see those families there and these wonderful new students. So appreciate the program there. I was able to step into Ms. Hoskinson's class at the Wilderness and met Ms. Eskerson at Shadow Lake. So really appreciate the work going on there and helping them be prepared for a full-time kindergarten next year. So one other thing, or another thing, as you've heard me report on in the past, I'm helping out with the Tohoma Behavioral Health Collective. We had an expanded meeting last week that included members of the city, some parents, other practitioners that don't regularly attend law enforcement, and the topic was on fentanyl in our community and the problem that that has become. I was really proud of the work being done there and the stories being told about just to raise awareness, to speak about and help with prevention and recovery as well, and the support of the team there, the learning that was going on, all in service of those things was really important, and I'm thankful for those people being involved. We had another equity meeting today, and we're continuing on network. And so some really thoughtful and important conversations going on there to align what's going on in that group with, you know, actually what will be going on in buildings and individual classrooms to help each student be successful in our system and beyond. So really excited about that. And then lastly, I'll report on conversation that we, you know, met with the finance team. You'll hear from Bill later tonight with our finance enrollment report. But we continue to do some work, which we'll be talking about later, around kind of our ongoing budget and what that looks like kind of trajectory around the next several years to make sure that we're safe and sound. So that's all that.
Thank you, Director Miller. Director Wiggins?
I'll keep my comments brief, since we have a pretty full agenda tonight. This is an ongoing thread for me. I wanted to congratulate again Ms. Wolfing's meeting of people class. I did hear this last week that a, I'm not sure if I'm correct, but it's correct. I think it got to go ahead and go to DC in person, which is extremely exciting for them. Is that, I got that right?
Yes.
Yeah, sure. I should just go right to the source. And so that's a, and I know the whole class is excited about that. So there's obviously COVID protocols and things that have to happen. But I know that I'm working with Ms. Wolfing right now to work through those issues and see how we can get everybody there and participate. Had some good conversations. I've spent a fair amount of time this week just reaching out to the community and having some conversations with people. Without going into specifics, just to, you know, just to reiterate from the DIAS that we are thoughtful. We appreciate all the comments that we get, the ones that are perhaps maybe sometimes hard to hear, but we appreciate all of them. We take all that feedback seriously. The issues that we're dealing with sometimes are complicated in this district, and so it requires a level of, and an approach to thinking that's maybe more nuanced than our current society lends itself to. So I would encourage you all to keep the comments coming, regardless of what it may appear, we do hear them. I can, for myself, one of the comments came up in conversation about sort of my effort or my involvement at these meetings. And not to get into the details of how board meetings are run, what the statutory authority for all these things are, most of my work comes before this board meeting, just so everyone understands. If I'm getting up here and I'm looking at a policy for the first time, I haven't done my job. I haven't done what I've been appointed to do. And so I think it's important to remember that a lot of times what you see up here is not, is really kind of typical iceberg of the work that's done. I've encouraged you, if you have questions, transparency is important. I don't know, I haven't had any conversations with anybody who says, who's not willing to answer questions. So if you are not getting answers to questions, feel free to email me. I'm happy to make connections and put people in the right places to do that. So with that, I want to thank all the members of the board, including Ms. Pagnelli, for their effort and their commitment to this district. Again, sometimes tough issues, complicated issues. I do think the way to get through some of these things is to have as many one-on-one conversations as you possibly can. I've found that that tends to work the best in terms of both being understood and understanding. So not so much a director's report tonight, other than just a comment on things and the nature of play in the Tohoma School District. But I am grateful for all the people that I run into every day who are doing this work. The students really are first. I can promise you that. Even with differences of opinions and approach, I can say unequivocally that that is the case. With that, I'll turn it over to my colleague.
Thank you, Director Wiggins. No, and you are welcome to. Pass the imaginary wand.
Good evening. Val, thank you for that. I really appreciate that. Oh, this one's mine, Chu. Okay. So in launching into the year 2022, I don't do New Year's resolutions because I never stick to them. But my challenge for myself this year was to really hold on to a word, and my word was perspective. And I want to challenge myself continually to step outside of my own shoes and get into somebody else's shoes and try to understand others' perspectives to the very best of my ability. And if I need to understand more or I need more information, then that is why I reach out, but that is why I try to try to gather that information whatever way that I can. So my two, my two highlights that I'd like to discuss during my report have allowed me to challenge my word perspective. One thing that I was able to do this week was I was able to shift my thinking from a parent putting my kids on the school bus and instead think about the perspective of the bus driver pulling up to safely grab my kiddos. So I went down to the bus garage. Do we still call it a bus garage? That's what we called it in my day. And I went down to Transportation, and at the wee hours, six-thirty in the morning, and everything was already fast at work. And I was absolutely astounded by the work that goes on down at Transportation. There are, there's a wonderful culture down there, and it feels like a family. They're doing such important work. They are up and at it and trying to do basically a wicked game of Tetris, if you will. They're trying to figure out how to make sure that each of our children are picked up safely every morning. And especially right now with COVID, that means, you know, trying to find substitute drivers, trying to make sure that they have enough people to pick up our kids. And Tiffany, our dispatcher, and Janie, our router, are moving things around at the speed of light and making sure that our kids get picked up safely every morning. And I just was really, really impressed, and I was really grateful for what they're doing down there, because that looks hard. And then also, I spent some time in the garage with George, our mechanic, Ramona, our meet tech, and Greg, our other mechanic. And I, again, was pretty speechless that they are in charge of 125 vehicles, and that they are able to keep those puppies running every day and on the road and safeguard our kids is also a huge feat, and it's pretty awesome work that they do. So that was my kind of perspective shift there. The other thing I'd like to mention is the community group that I've kind of latched on to, they allow me to come in, and that's the Fentanyl Fighters, that's their name now. And that is the group of families in our community who are working to raise awareness about drugs in our community, much like so many other communities right now and always, and help educate and connect and create a space. And they're really progressing in that. Last week, we had forty families zoom in on that meeting. And as I sat there, I thought, you know, Zoom has been tough. It's, you know, really helped us in a lot of ways, but we miss faces and contact and just that person-to-person connection. But the great part about Zoom in this meeting was people could just show up, and their screen can be black, they could anticipate, they could get the connection, they could get the listening, they could get the, the, okay, I'm not alone in this whole fight. They could really get, they got a lot from that meeting, I would imagine. You got to hear from a student many, many years ago, he's 29 now, and he has lost about seventy friends to overdose. And he's finally sober at 29, and it's been a really long, long journey. He's been sober for three years. And he was able to speak to the group, and I just could see from the parents who were on camera and from myself, I wanted to run up and grab my son, listen to this, listen to this guy, because what he said was just so important. So I just want to commend the Fentanyl Fighters and also the district and the city who are really putting this at the top of their priority list right now to help create support and awareness and education, figuring out strategies to make sure these kids and families get what they need. So that's a really, really good thing. And this group is just breaking down barriers, you know? Addiction is a disease, and I have it in my family, a lot of people have it in their families, and breaking down those barriers and talking about it, it felt good for people. I know it felt good for me. So way to go, Fentanyl Fighters. And last but not least, my other important job is legislative rep, and legislator is in week two, and they are, they have a full agenda and policy committees right now. They've been, of all the bills they're looking at, fourteen bills related to education. And one bill to highlight would be House Bill 1226, which is pushing for requiring just a simple majority vote for passing school bonds. So that's, that's an important one. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will keep this short, but I did tonight want to highlight our partnership goal. You all know that we worked over the course of a couple of years with more than a thousand of our faculty, staff, students, community members, and we came together to come up with five goals that we wanted to focus on in our district between now and 2025. And one of those goals is partnership. And as I look at all of the different initiatives that we have as a school board, as a school system, I continue to be really impressed by the work that we're doing. And I just wanted to highlight four areas where I see us really standing out in this area. One of them is actually sitting in Offense Row. Our city council and our school board work incredibly well together, and it's really unique to our community, and I feel so fortunate to be able to get to see it up close and personal. I know in talking with other communities, it's not always like that. We don't, they often don't have that back and forth collaborative nature, and so I'm really grateful to you all for being such great partners in this community work. We also have a great relationship with our legislators, or legislators. And Hailey actually was just mentioning it. We have Lisa Callan, Bill Ramos, Mark Mullet, and we have an annual meeting that we have with them to talk about our legislative priorities that they can then represent us very well when they go to, go into session. And again, that is very unique. And then our PTA/PTO roundtable. I am the liaison for PTA/PTO roundtable group, and again, it's so wonderful to be in a room with families who are equally committed to the success of their kids. And we learn so much from them, just hearing them conversations about what is going on in their homes and ways that the school can be supporting them even better. So I'm grateful for that. And then last but not least, all of you, I'm grateful that you all are here tonight, that you continue to share your perspective, your experience with us. As Director Wiggins shared, we hear you. We may not be in agreement on issues, but we do always have one thing in common, and that is that we care deeply about our students and our kids. We are parents. We share that, and we always continue to put students at the center of every single decision that we make. So while we may not agree on certain issues, I hope that you know that we continue to bring great heart to this work. We are extremely committed to our community, and we love, we love Tohoma, and we continue to put students at the center of every decision that we make. So with that, I will go ahead and include agenda item four point zero three. We're going to move on to agenda item five point zero one, which is our board of directors recognition. And to kick things off, we have Superintendent Hanson who's going to lead a document for us.
All right. Thank you, President Halliwell. State of Washington, the proclamation reads, whereas the mission of Washington's public school system is to assure that all students achieve at high levels and possess the knowledge and skills to be responsible members of a democratic society who enjoy productive and satisfying lives. And whereas Washington's 295 locally elected school boards and nine elected educational service district boards are the core of the public education governance system in our state. And whereas the districts and regions they lead serve more than 1 million students, have a combined annual budget of over $15 billion, and employ approximately 120,000 people. And whereas school directors play a crucial role in promoting student learning and achievement by creating a vision, establishing policies and budgets, and setting clear standards of accountability for all involved. And whereas school directors are directly accountable to the residents in their districts and regions, serving as a vital link between members of the community and their schools. And whereas school directors and educational service districts provide a passionate voice of advocacy for public schools and the welfare of schoolchildren. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize school directors as outstanding volunteers and champions for public education. Now, therefore, I, J. Ansley, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim January 2022 as School Board Recognition Month in Washington, and I encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance. Signed, Governor J. Ansley.
Thank you, Superintendent Hanson. And Mayor Kelly?
Thank you, Madam President. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. Directors, school board reps, Mr. Secretary of the Board of Directors, it's always an honor to come before the school board and recognize, recognizing outstanding work that this homeless school does for the community and the value. Although the governor gave you a proclamation, we're going to give you one too, it's a little more personal. Okay. Just to make sure I can introduce our guests who are here tonight. Linda Johnson, Councilwoman Linda Johnson, our newest council member, Councilwoman Victoria Schrott. This is kind of a cool thing. We've got the senior council member, we've got the junior council. I'm going to hear about that later. And then we have City Manager Laura Philpott here today. And then we have City Manager Laura Philpott here today. Members of the audience, First Lady of Maple Valley, my wife, right there, thank you for being here tonight. We have a proclamation for her tonight. Please, we'll start off. Linda Johnson's going to start it off for us. Thank you very much.
Whereas the mission of our public school system is to ensure that all students achieve at high levels, possess the knowledge and skills to be responsible citizens, and enjoy productive and satisfying lives. And whereas the state of Washington is committed to ensuring academic success for all children in our public schools. And...
Whereas the state's two hundred and ninety-five locally elected school boards are the core of the public education governance system in our state. And whereas school directors play a crucial role in promoting student learning and achievement by creating a vision, setting goals, and establishing clear standards for student performance in each school district. And serving as a vital link between the community and the classroom. And...
Whereas it is appropriate to recognize our local school directors, Leah Palowit, Pete Miller, Valerie Paganelly, Hailey Pandograph, and Michael Wiggins as outstanding volunteers and champions of public education.
Now, therefore, we, the City Council, the City of Maple Valley, Washington, do hereby proclaim January, we don't do this very often, as Tohoma School Board Recognition Month, and the City of Maple Valley urge all citizens in joining in this outstanding group of people. So thank you very much. Sign the twenty-fourth day of January, all seven council members and City Manager Laura Philpott. So thank you very much. President Halliwell, you said about, I think, when you were talking a few minutes ago about some of the special things that the city and school districts do. And it's because of the leadership of the five of you and some of us. And it's really remarkable is how we work together. And like you said, why do I have to have a president?
You get ten seconds.
Okay. You said before, we work together. Other cities are very anxious of that. And when I have a bi-weekly meeting of mayors, they always talk about what the school district is doing right now. Ms. Pandograph, you make the deputy mayor of Cornell because you're liaison for legislators. These are the ones that are powerful right there. Superintendent Hanson, Beetle, City Manager, Philpott, once every other month or so. That's powerful right there. President Halliwell, we meet every month or so. What's really important for this community to understand is we are working extremely hard on mental health and both organizations are working together on that. And here's an example. Our state legislators allocated a lot of funding to our experiment program and to Tohoma Maple Valley conspiracy. In fact, we're going to give an update to State Representative Lisa Callan pretty soon. And she's been talking about it all over the state. We've been making phone calls from other mayors about it. Here's another example of how we work together. Do you ever notice some snow issues around town? Well, Laura Philpott called over to snowplows, cleared up Tohoma High School, laid a foot on elementary school, and Rock Creek Elementary School. And in turn, everyone from all the cities have borrowed a couple of school buses for some events around town. Best starts for kids that Don Waikle is involved with, awesome partnership right there with King County moving that forward. Just under a million dollars allocated to the Tohoma School District and Maple Valley area. That showed our partnership with all the regional partners. Thank you for all your leadership. I see a lot of educators out here and I thank you too on behalf of the City of Maple Valley, all twenty-seven thousand residents. Thanks for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Now I'd like to welcome Callie Rabel.
Hi, Lucy. All of your familiar and friendly faces are tonight. I'm Callie Rabel, TEA, president and fourth grade teacher at the Gorge School, the Gorges. And I'm here tonight in recognition of School Board Appreciation Month. Just to say thank you for all of the work that you do. So I'm here on behalf of roughly five hundred and sixty TEA members to express that gratitude to you. Thank you for your time away from your families, from your hobbies, from your paying jobs, for all the time that you put in to help bring our school community together. We appreciate your collective ability to take our challenging work, and this has been, this has been a year or two, put it all into perspective and keep our students...
I didn't reset that.
Okay, I'll take my two more seconds. You put all of our challenging work into perspective and you keep our students at the center of every discussion we have and every decision we make, you know that. So the Tohoma Education Association just wanted to say we see you, we know the work you do, and we want to offer you all of our emotions gratitude. So I just have a little thank you card for you guys.
Next, we will have Judy.
Good evening. I'm Judy Bellable. I'm one of the associate principals at the high school. And I am honored to be here tonight on behalf of all of the administrators in the district, the elementary administrators, middle school, and high school. So thank you for that. Want to start by sharing a little story I read this weekend. And I honestly immediately thought of our school board because I knew this was your appreciation month. So I'm going to paraphrase it. It's by author with the last name Isley. But the paraphrase is this. There was a young boy walking on the beach and he was picking up things and throwing them back in the ocean. And an older man walked by and couldn't tell what the boy was doing and said, what are you doing? And the young man said, well, I'm picking up starfish and I'm throwing them back in the sea to keep them alive. Otherwise, they will die. And the older man kind of laughed at him and said, you realize there are miles and miles and miles of beach ahead of you. You cannot save all the starfish. And at that point, the young boy picked up a starfish, threw it in the sea, and he said, you're right, but I saved that one. I made a difference. The name of that story is You Make a Difference. And that's who I thought of you. Because you all finally make a difference every single day. And the school administrators definitely notice it. Some of the highlights that my fellow administrators shared with me, we all love it when you come to our schools. And I'll tell you, if some of you came from another district, that's not always the way people feel. But here, we love it when you come to our schools because you call our staff by name, you talk to our kids, you want to go in the classrooms and see the good work kids are doing, and you appreciate all of that. And you always ask, how can we support you? So you partner with us, you sit on all of these committees, the Equity Committee, the Housing Committee, name the committees, spend countless hours, and we are so thankful. There are no words I can put to it to thank you enough on behalf of our entire group. But I'll just go back to the title of the short story, You Make a Difference. So thank you.
Thank you, Judy. And Ruthie?
So I'm Ruthie Mackey. I am our Tohoma PSC Classified President, Chapter President. Today, we have Carrie Walston, our Vice President, and Shannon Kidden, our Unit of Revenue Transportation, and Brenda Carl, our Vice President, Position Two. I do know there's some other classified staff that are here. So if you want, you can stand up because to show you're here. Okay, that's two times, right? So on behalf of over five hundred and sixty classified employees, we want to thank you. We want to thank you for your commitment and dedication to our school district. And anyone who knows public school employees in Tohoma notes how important the shared decision-making process is and its value. We, as public school employees, look forward to building our relationship with each one of you and continue working together towards what is best for all of us in Tohoma. And we thank you so much for everything that we do. So thank you. And we do have our transportation. I know you get to introduce, they're all right here.
All right. So I'm just here. I'm Shannon Kidden. And we made you guys little cards and transportation on it to say thank you as a team. You guys do so much. And we do appreciate it. So.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, please. Thank you, everybody. You really make our day. From the bottom of our hearts, we really appreciate it. As I shared before, we love what we do and we love supporting our community. But it's extra special that we get to celebrate with you and so we're grateful. So thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to Agenda Item five point zero two, which is our SEL parent educator update. And SEL, for those of you who are listening and may not be familiar with that term, it stands for social emotional learning. So now we're going to welcome Lake Wilderness Elementary Principal Melanie Breedy. We have Glacier Park Principal Shelley Gaston. We have Ruthie Mackey, Kelsey Fritz, Lori Dyke, and Jennifer Hoyle. And they're all joining us to talk about social emotional learning.
Thank you so much for allowing us to talk about something that is so important to all of us. Can you go to the next slide, J? Thank you. I need a clicker. So just a little background knowledge. This, this concept of the social emotional parent educators began about three years ago when all of the school counselors in our system and the principals and probably all of our teachers, really, really there was a call for more support for all of our students around their social emotional wellbeing. And so, of course, we did what all the good principals do and we asked for more money and for more staff. And of course, being the good stewards of our public money, we knew that we don't have unlimited funds. And so at first, we wanted to, we thought, let's hire several more counselors in each building. Well, that obviously wasn't a realistic goal. So then we, we thought, well, okay, we don't have unlimited resources in terms of money, but we have some really untapped resources in our classified staff. And, and we thought, well, if we can hire more classified staff and have them work with our counselors and our deans to really, really focus on the social emotional wellbeing of our students, all of our students are going to benefit. Will you go to the next slide, J? So now, fast forward three years. And when we take a look at our climate and culture goals and our wellness goals, these amazing women back here, four of our twelve SEL parents are what really stands out about what we're doing for our students through the use of our social emotional parents to help all of our students reach these goals. And I know you all get to hear from me far too often. So in a few minutes, after Melanie shares a little bit more specifics, we're going to ask these miracle workers, so to speak, to share a little bit about what they do day to day. And you will, you will see a common theme of how those connect to our goals. So thank you.
Good evening. We can go to the next slide, J. So this graphic here kind of goes into depth a little bit more about our bigger picture. So this is our tier-one supports. And when we think about our building teams collaborating regularly to support students' social emotional needs, we begin at that universal, that tier-one level for all students. We know that all students benefit from skills and strategies to regulate their bodies and feelings throughout the day. We'll see that transition arrow, whether it's transitioning from grade to grade or back to school from being out for a while, or even little moments throughout the day. We know that it requires regulation, relationships, and responsibility skills. Each classroom teacher has a variety of tier-one strategies, that's like universal first-tier level, that supports that social emotional needs of most students. Some of these strategies are skills for learning, problem-solving strategies, and friendship skills taught through our second step program in collaboration with our counselor and our SEL parents and supported through everyday class meetings. We'll go to the next slide. Because as we know, that tier-one level doesn't meet the needs of all of our students. And so sometimes students show a need for supports beyond that tier-one level of supports. Our positive support teams, which could be comprised of teachers, parents, counselors, principals, deans, or other members of the special education team, help to identify that unmet need and provide these tier-two supports. This means students are receiving that universal tier-one level and that targeted tier-two supports. This could mean further instruction or regulation skills. It could mean check-ins and learning through problem-solving. It could mean positive reinforcement schedules or problem-solving strategies, targeted group skills, or playground supports and restorative practices in an effort to restore relationships. So we have some voices from the work that is happening day to day. So I'm going to turn it over to Ruthie Mackey, who is our representative from Lake Wilderness. Other cats. Yeah, you can go to the next slide.
All right. First, I want to say I think having an SEL support at an elementary level has been huge. It's great. And I, through the years, I've been here for a while, so I can say this has been a very positive impact, I believe, for our students. But I want to share with you, at Lake Wilderness, we have two part-time and one whole-school cell parents. We support teachers and students throughout our school. Our goal is to provide universal support to all students through tier-one strategies. And many of our students we support need that tier-one support and additional tier-two interventions. Through the comprehensive team approach, we target students' needs, many of whom have had some kind of trauma or they have not been diagnosed yet. We support needs from providing snacks, breaks, positive reinforcements, friendships, and help with academics that need it. We really work on building relationships with our students because we want them to know they are loved and belong because they are part of the Lake Wilderness family. This year, we have focused on zones of regulations. And the Zones of Regulations is a strategy to identify different states of emotions and what calming strategies one may need. We have done many lessons in every classroom what the four Zones of Regulations are. Then the teacher can go deeper with the students using packets for each student to complete for themselves. We use the same language throughout our building, so we use universal language in our school. Each staff member has been given a lanyard card with Zones of Regulation, card along with restorative practice questions, which is that there. So every one of our staff has been given one of these. Also, that's including our custodians. They also have received one and the extended enrichment program. So every classified staff has received this card, so the whole school has the same universal language. One way we have supported our whole staff is to deliver professional development to each classified and SWL certified staff member. Our restorative practice questions are questions we can, we all can use to help restore relationships when one has been harmed. This practice is a piece that is very helpful, so we are all, so we are all using the same language when we talk with students for finding out what has happened and restoring relationships. We have the questions readily available, and I've been working many years in the district dealing with behaviors and meeting the needs of students along with our teachers. Restorative practice is a piece that has been missing, and I look forward to implementing this practice as we move forward. So right now, I'd like to introduce Jennifer Hoyle. She is another SEL parent educator from Glacier Park. Thank you.
So I'm Jennifer Hoyle, and I am one of two SEL parents at Glacier Park. When I first came to Tohoma in two thousand and eighteen, I enlisted to this parent, which gave me the opportunity to work one-on-one with some of our students with the greatest needs. While working one-on-one with these students, it gave me the opportunity to see the benefits of a school-wide support system. of a school-wide support system. For the past three years, I have been working as an SEL parent and I truly love every moment. Being an SEL parent gives me the opportunity to connect with students who otherwise would not have additional support in a school setting. In the SEL parent role, I'm given the flexibility to help students receive help in that moment, whether that be additional math help, reading help, a writing break, a walk down on the hallway, or help with a conflict at recess. The flexibility of this role also allows me to help our senior students with problem-solving conversations with students and managing the data from our SWIS program that tracks all of our enroll entries. My favorite part of being one of our SEL parents is daily check-in, checks-out with our students. I enjoy building relationships with our caregivers, setting goals for the day in the morning and celebrating their successes in the afternoon. Not every day is for the success, some are for problem-solving and goal-setting for tomorrow. But the most important part is that our students know that they're cared for and heard their inner private school. I truly believe that a student who has a connection to their school and knows that they are valued will ultimately be more successful.
Hello, I am Kelsey Fritz and I'm along with Lori Dyke. We are full-time SEL parents at Home Elementary. Our primary goal at Home Elementary is to accelerate the academic and social emotional growth of each student we serve. In SEL, we do this by being intentional with each and every action. This summer, we met as a team to plan out our year and decided to have a focus for each month for SEL. We started the year off with belonging to tie to our district and welcome our students back to school. We moved into bullying prevention, self-efficiency for self-advocacy, empathy, and currently, this month, our focus has been on emotion management. We support these mental focuses with both the four themed bookmarks that we make for the library, classroom visits, and activities and lessons. For example, we're currently teaching our students about the zones chart and strategies to use to manage the emotions that they experience. A few other things we do to support our students are friendship groups, student check-ins, lunch bunch, connections and support on recess, and fourth grade buddies out on recess that connect with their parents. A story that I have about a student that was struggling with some separation anxiety. She had a hard time transitioning to class. And then, we also saw that coming from recess back to class. Out of recess, she wouldn't engage with peers. So, I spent a lot of time for out of recess and introduced her to other students. And then, I connected her with a couple of fourth graders. And since then, last couple of months, she's made tremendous growth and no longer needs life support. And she's the one that flies by me and gives me that wave if I'm lucky, which makes my heart so happy.
Our report wouldn't be complete if we didn't ask the kids, what do these evening talks in every school do for them? So, I brought some student voices with me. So, one of our kindergartners went and asked, "How is this helpful for you? How do your check-ins help?" And she said, "They take breaks with me. My body feels good when I have breaks." I went to a second grader and asked the second grader the same question. "How is this helpful? How does this help you?" And he says, "I take walks and when I come back, I can work better." And finally, I went to a fourth grade class and he was beyond thrilled that I asked his opinion. And I said, "I was bringing his thoughts with me to the board meeting tonight." And he said, "It's easy to breathe for a minute instead of having to stress out, no matter how hard it is. It is really nice to be able to breathe for a second." So, thank you.
Thank you. Directors, do you have any questions?
Just a comment. I think sometimes as a parent, I have five teenagers in the district right now. So, you can imagine all that entails in terms of my social emotional well-being. I think that there's zero doubt, I sit on the board in terms of, as a representative of teaching and learning. There is no teaching and learning without social emotional well-being. And so, I think the effort is greatly appreciated and understood. And the correlation is very, very tight. I have, my youngest, I have, I think I have all five kids? Jerry, Jonah, Joan? Who are on the 504 and IDP, right? So, I've been around the block a few times. And there are so many students who don't meet those, or don't for whatever reason. But that doesn't mean that there are not needs there and there are not supports that are necessary for them to excel, to live up to their potential students. So, I'm grateful for the, I'm grateful for the impact that you're all making in that space. And it doesn't go unnoticed. And my children are testimonials of that too. They come home and they say these things to me. So, it's, of all the things, and I don't take any credit for it as a board member, but I give it all to you. But it's one of the things I'm most proud of as a district that we really focused on this effort. Not just meeting at the same academic door, you know, day in, day out. Say, "Well, why aren't things changing and why are they changing?" But really understanding that this is very much connected to academic success. So, beyond just the personal well-being of our kids, so thank you.
Director Pendelgra, did you have anything you wanted to ask or add? Was it, is it Kelsey, guys? Kelsey, Kelsey and Lori?
I just wanted to tell you thank you for being that little girl's pal on the playground. Because I know about that. My daughter had very severe separation anxiety from me from K through three at Lake Wilderness Elementary. And it was parent educators like you guys that really helped her get off of my body in the doorway. So, I just thank you for being there for that little gal.
And then, are zones of regulation, is that across elementary schools? Are they all using that? Yeah?
I'm actually seeing that even in some trainings that they use in different states. So, it is out there and I believe they do have it there.
So, when they come to middle school, it's all kind of common knowledge for them at that point.
Great, thank you. And it's my left side, Director Miller?
Director Wiggins, thank you for your comments. I echo that and I'm just so thankful as a parent. The work that you do has meant so much to my children's success in the classroom and outside of the school grounds as well. It's really, makes a huge difference. And one thing I wanted to point out, in December, we had some, one thing we were doing around our site plans. And at the elementary level, I would say every single building talked about the importance of SEL parents and the work that you're doing. It's just so critical. You make a huge difference for the kids that you work with one-on-one. You make a big difference for the teachers in the classrooms with the support that you provide. You make a huge difference for the kids that don't need the one-on-one support that you're providing to them. It's just, it's just so immensely important, the work that you're doing for the success of our system. So, I'm really thankful that our district is behind us, that we are getting more support. And really thank you for all the work that you do day to day. It means a lot.
Director Paganelli?
Thank you, Madam President. So, before Friday, when we got our board agenda, I, as board member, wasn't aware you guys were going to be here tonight. So, I have a couple of questions and requests, along with my thank you for the work that you do. And I ran into Ruthie yesterday during the transition kindergarten time at Lake Wilderness and saw a little bit of that work in action, of that coming off the playground. So, I know it's hard at work. So, my question would be, you have our attention right now. Is there something that you want us to be aware of that you aspire to with this work? That, as opposed to simply reporting how it's going, is there something you, a call to action for the board tonight in any way?
Well, of course, we would love to expand the program. When we first started, we had one SEL parent at a school. We were fortunate to have two, but definitely we would love to have that grow even more.
Melanie?
I think one of the other questions that came up is what are we seeing out of this rebound year? And I started reflecting on the Wildcats that we have at Lake Wilderness. And, you know, you look into our second grade classrooms and not a single one has had the benefit of a full year of a full day of instruction. So, while we are doing some, you know, positive support meetings and thinking about these skill gaps, it's not because of a disability, but it's because time needed to practice skills. And so, our SEL parents are skilled in that practice and that intentional instruction of the skills that they need to be able to be at school successfully and access their education.
Thank you. One of my other questions, part of my request, is, Director Wiggins hit on it a little bit. Many of the adults in the room didn't have the benefit of the work that you are now doing at students in that age cohort. And granted, some of those needs are ones that we also didn't experience because we were not, we didn't have a COVID-19 experience during our education. But I would wonder if there are, there are things that you would recommend for the adults in our community? I, for one, my request is, I'd love a copy of the restorative language that you will have around your necks right now. So, the question is, is there anything in particular, as adults, as you've learned and been working with young students, that you would share with us? That has been transformative for you in doing this work as an adult?
Okay, I'll share. So, I, before we transferred into, before we moved into our initial lesson, we called the Wildcats. And we did a lot of problem solving. And it's kind of similar at Lake Wilderness of what I'm doing now. However, the restorative practices and the questions that come forward, we had the opportunity that when Ms. Amanda Rushaw came and we had training. Huge. It was such a positive, really good training. Because I felt when we met with kids, the restorative practice is a strategy. And I think, listen, I have slides, we have slides as we do a small presentation and are looking at it. But the questions are there and it's, you don't have to think about the questions. It are, they're designed and created to solve issues, to help restore relationships. And I think that's huge. I think that it helps us when we're talking with children. And it just, it really focuses on bringing back from someone who has had harm done to them and really back that relationship. I think that's been a huge impact too.
I'll just add one thing too. We've noticed from our climate and culture survey and the willingness of kids that feel, they don't have the, they're not strong enough to share their feelings. And feeling that when I'm sad or mad, that that's a bad feeling to have. And instead of normalizing these feelings, and we have strategies to be able to handle those feelings. So, the more we can all be kind of on that same, using that same language, I think our kids better fit.
President Hall?
Yes, please.
No, I believe that's actually time, so it's your turn.
I just wanted to add on, the question was about adult self-care. And Melanie and Shelley can share that the leadership team has been, throughout the year, receiving different professional development around how to best lead during difficult times and support staff in dealing with trauma. And so, that's more of the place where that would live. The other two parts I wanted to share, Ruthie, as I listened to you talk about the cards that everybody's got walking around, you made reference to the custodians. And it's every, every human in the building has an opportunity to positively impact kids. It really got me thinking about our transportation department and opportunity there as well that perhaps we need to reflect on and take advantage of. And then, the last piece, Jen, as you were talking, I can think about all the times that I've been into Glacier Park and the radio's gone off and we all know what's happening and folks are scrambling. And we look at the amount of care and we talk here and people alluded to it, that we talk about the amount of care and support for these semi-targeted interventions and support for tier two support. The piece that's not often talked about is the positive benefit for all kids. And that kids, or those kids are able to get that support, what it does for the full classroom. And so, I'm deeply appreciative for all the work that you guys do. So, much gratitude. Thank you.
And all of my questions have already been asked and answered. So, that's the downside of coming, going last. But I'm grateful to you, as a parent, as a school board director, I just am so grateful to you for the work that you do each and every day to support our kids and help them feel a deep sense of belonging and value, know that they're seen and that we're really excited to have them in school every day. So, thank you. We will move on to agenda item 5.03 now, which is action to approve the second reading of our 2022-23 secondary course catalog. May I please have a motion to approve agenda item 5.03? Action to approve the second reading of our 2022-23 secondary course catalog.
Madam President, I'd like to move to approve action item 5.03, second reading 2022-23 secondary course catalog.
Second.
Director Paganelli made the motion and Director Miller seconded. Do we have discussion?
Madam President, my only discussion is, were you here for the first reading with us? Or was that the meeting that you missed?
I missed, but I-
Because I would be interested in any observations you had that we might have missed or any thing that you gleaned from the report that would be helpful to just have as backdrop to the board deliberations.
I went back and listened to the meeting, read the materials. The questions asked were answered in the meeting, so I'll have it in the meeting.
Okay. I was more interested in any perspective that you might have had that we, given you weren't with us, we weren't able to involve. Okay?
Okay, so that is the end of our discussion. I'm going to call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Agenda item 5.03, action to approve the second reading of our 2022-23 secondary course catalog. It passes five to zero.
Madam President, I know we took a vote. Our student board rep was looking to-
I just wanted to note that before it's finally approved, there is a small typo where it says Spanish II without the second S. So, that might be something to fix before it's finally approved.
Thank you. Okay, I made a note. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to agenda item 5.04, which is our first reading revised policy 2025, sorry, 2125, Healthy Family Life and Sex Education and Review to Adopt Procedure 2125P, Sexual Health Education. And we have joining us now our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, Dawn Leaky. And she's going to be presenting and then answering any questions that we have.
Trying to give you or provide for you in PowerPoint overview, that was also posted on the public side, just a little bit of kind of context to this one. This is really being prompted because of the change in the law. And so, the policy following, following that. And the expectation that we have a comprehensive sexual health curriculum in place as our team has been looking at this. One of the things that I wanted to share with you and has certainly been shared with interested community members is we don't actually anticipate gigantic change in what we've been doing for a long time. We've had a sexual health curriculum in place. The biggest change that we'll actually have this year is not because of policy changes. Well, actually, we're working on a refresh of resources. But as you look at the actual policy language, it's really not going to result in drastic changes in TOMA.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? Or do you have, do you have something to say?
I do, but I don't want to go down on the floor.
There's a lot in here. A lot embodied in it, I mean. And I guess I don't necessarily feel overly prepared to ask all the questions that I would have on this. I'm wondering more about the timeline of the policy approval and- I'm wondering more about the timeline of the policy approval and the procedure and then the work that goes into the group supporting then the content of the curriculum and how that, how that is aligned and when then curriculum that is going to change, even though it might be similar to what we are doing, at what point does that begin in instruction or begin to be available?
The new resources, once they're actually put into place, then we would train on those before we're implementing. The group is a ways away from, from that. So connected to the policy piece, which is in front of you, we certainly have known about the comprehensive sexual health expectation in the new law. So we've certainly been, I guess, conscious that this was on the horizon for a while and just waiting for WASDA to catch up with the state in their normal cycle that they do as far as refreshing language. This isn't going to necessarily, I mean, it's not that this is driving the curriculum refresh. As we look at what the state standards are connected to health and fitness and sexual health in that part of that, then like with any other curriculum area, we ask ourselves, how well are we teaching to the standards right now? What does our alignment look like from elementary through high school? And then look to make sure that our resources are in place to help us with that.
Do you have any other questions?
My only, my only other question at this juncture is, again, process. So first reading tonight, are we going to determine as a board then that it becomes second reading on consent agenda? Or are we, because I have a lot of questions that aren't going to fit in tonight's meeting, but just for informational purposes. So I don't want to be rushed, I guess, if we're going to plan to have this on consent. I want to be aware of it so I can align my, my timeline to fit.
Yeah. So is that a question for me?
Yeah.
So when we make decisions about whether to put things on consent or have a second reading, it's really about the board's opinion about that? So if people feel like they need more time, they have more questions, then we put it on for a second reading.
Then the only other question I'll have for tonight is my curiosity is at the high school level, once they get into ninth through 12th, and there's curriculum assigned, but is, is it not necessarily, is it structured right now in such a way that every student will receive it based on the required courses that we have in place for them to take? And that's why they're tied to ELA class or a class that's not otherwise aligned to that?
Yeah. So the majority of the sexual health component of the curriculum is actually delivered through health and fitness, through the health component of health and fitness. The HIV/AIDS lessons, which are required at each grade level, is the reason that you see the components connected to ELA or connected to social studies or connected to science at the other grade levels, is to be able to meet that yearly requirement connected to HIV/AIDS. And we've tried to make curriculum connection points to those content areas, so it's not completely out of field. And hopefully you saw that reflected in that curriculum review.
Don, do you have any questions? I'm trying to go at the end, but I just, I'll just jump right in. I'm not trying to do, I just, okay. So I have two questions. Thank you, thank you for being so gracious. Okay, clearly I'm excited about my questions. So one of my questions is, obviously partnership, as I mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, is one of our goals. So as you look at selecting a curriculum, how are you engaging our community to make sure that it's a good fit?
We had a, a call for interested participants connected to that much earlier in the school year. We also put an invitation out to our new instructional materials committee members for any of them who would actually like to participate with the, with the committee we're connected to actually doing that. As you'll also recall, in our newly adopted last year curriculum process, that once we get our top two resources selected, that those, the committee essentially kind of pauses in their work for a second to be able to make those resources available to all of our community. We have a community information night where some of our teachers, when we get to that point, are committee members, it doesn't have to be a teacher, it just has them on the ones we've done so far. But teachers will, or committee members will explain the top two resources, the reasons that they have risen up to the top. And then those resources are available here at CSC as well as online. So that community members are able to review those resources. We have a forum where community members are encouraged to make comments or to provide information. That information all goes to the review committee so that they have a chance to see if there might be some content or pieces that, that offers another viewpoint for them to consider before they do their final ratings of the curriculum and then bring the recommendation from that to the INC and the process through the instructional materials committee. And then after that happens, finally, materials come to the board. So we really feel like with that new process that we put into place last year, that many of you in the board who are really well aware of, that we have actually a lot of opportunity there in a way that we never did before. So feeling really good about that.
That may be the first time, Dawn, that I've heard someone recite a four-page procedure. But I'm, I'm looking at 2020 right now, the policy and procedure, for folks who may be interested in reviewing more of it, in addition to the numerous, numerous forms that are found within that section, but 2020 would be the thing. So thank you, Dawn.
And then my last question is, I'm curious, with implementing any new curriculum, there's obviously some learning that is involved on the faculty and staff side. So as you start to envision what that support might look like, what would you, what would it look like? And we can do like 10-second clip notes since I got the question out before this.
It's going to really depend on how different the materials are and some of the strategies might be for what they're teaching right now. And it will also for sure be differentiated by level and how familiar the teachers are with teaching that content. Our high school team is going to need minimal training because they've been doing this for a long time. And some of them served on the state committee that actually put the standards in place. That's going to be contrasted by our elementary health and fitness teams are going to probably want more support because that's, this hasn't been the thing that they've been teaching. So it's going to, it's going to range.
Okay, thank you. And Director Miller?
Yeah, just, just a comment and two questions. One, I just appreciated the opportunity for parent community involvement that was embedded in the procedure of the community night that you mentioned, the fact that the curriculum is certainly available for reviewing, that there's kind of notice that goes out when there's a particular piece that's going to be instructed. I appreciate that. The questions I have, one, I just noticed that the procedure was new. The policy's been around, I think it was initially adopted in 1983. So I was curious about if it really is new or if we've had a procedure titled something else before. And then secondly, on the bottom of this page that's on the screen, there's a passage that begins with a superintendent design meaning will provide parents' guardians an opportunity to review the material used and provide information on how to exclude their child from sexual health education instruction stop. And what I expected to come after that was shall they choose to exercise that right? And I noticed that that similar language was embedded, so I just wanted to know why that particular language was straightened. It just kind of made me think as though it's expected that they'll exercise that right. But it just, it just was odd to me, it was missing.
I could not speak to the nuances of that from the WASDA lawyer perspective, so I just want you to know that I'm not, I'm not going to be able to-
Well, we're following the model, I guess that's part of it.
Yeah, this is, there's a few minor pieces that, that I tweeted, that I thought fit us a little bit better for our actual practice, but very minimally and not that particular strike.
Understood, okay. And then the procedure was the other question, the newness of the procedure.
Yeah, interestingly enough, and Tamara could verify, but while we had policy connected to this, we just didn't have procedure.
Okay.
So, and neither did WASDA.
Yeah. Just one quick question, sorry. Go ahead.
I'm just piggybacking on you, Malia and Pete, just about all the community involvement that you're encouraging on reviewing this. I know that there is, there is chatter in the community about the sexual policy, which is completely answered. And with all the opportunities that we are going to have, and this may be kind of a question for you, AJ, too, but have you guys, are there strategies that you guys are considering in making sure that we get all these opportunities out to the community? Because oftentimes I've heard folks maybe on a different issue say, oh, I know that there was this opportunity or that opportunity. So is there a way to expand kind of that messaging so that families know that there are all these opportunities for review of this? Any?
Yeah. I can promise, AJ, we're involved. Certainly, we'll use the standard strategies that we've had in the past. Certainly we'll include the direct weekly communication out to families as well as to home matters as well as social media. So those are really the three most standard practices that we do. And we'll try to make sure that we put in multiple flags.
Thank you.
I just have a question, Dawn. So my understanding, reading through the, the policy, I think it was the policy not the procedure, but there's the state standards, then there's the guidelines for kind of implementing those standards. But the curriculum can come from the state list of kind of approved materials or the district that developed its own curriculum or selected curriculum, for example, from outside of the state. So what has our, the two that we're, that we're bringing to the table and consider, are they coming from the state's list of approved curriculum or are they, have we brought them in from somewhere else?
So we aren't even far enough along in the process right at this point to be at the spot where we are, we have, in fact, the team has been working on the, looking at the standards and thinking about the priority standards and the vertical articulations, like what are the priorities at each of the three levels? And we're just about to do a call for resources. We will look primarily at the, the list of approved curriculums. If we don't use one of the approved curriculums and we're going with our heart, with our own, then the expectation is that we have to do additional vetting with the state to then have that, those approved. And there's some really good curriculum on the approved list, so I don't anticipate that we're going to have any problem finding something that's not really high, high quality that the teachers like.
And that was my, yeah, that was my fault. It's like if you don't use the approved list, then you're sure there's an extra level of layer of procedure that goes into-
There is.
Okay, thank you.
Which we're happy to do. If none of, none of them meet our needs, then we'll be happy to. We've written lots of curriculum ourselves, but we're not, we're not all satisfied.
Thank you.
Machu, did you have something you wanted to ask for?
I think that it was already briefly addressed and that you said that the high school will not be, not much additional teaching, but will, will the procedure really be that consistent? And that all in a term, when it comes to the amount of time spent covering it? Or is it, or is it going to be similar time in terms of the time spent teaching activities now?
Yeah, I would anticipate it will be pretty close to the amount of time now. It certainly won't be more in the content areas that do it outside of health and fitness. That's pretty, we try to not take too much time out of our regular content in this.
Okay, thank you. You really want to do it. I'd like to do that.
Yeah. You don't want to give up that content.
Thank you. Thank you so much for joining us. We will move on to agenda item 5.
Madam President, may I just, to my original question of timing, Director Wiggins mentioned that, you know, this was passed in legislation in 2020. And this is another agenda item that, Dr. Paganelli, on Friday-
We have our three-minute Brown-Robin rule. So could we, how about if you and I take this offline, we can talk about it outside of the meeting? Because we have to keep to our three minutes. That's the kind of real support.
I just wanted to advocate for more time for deliberation. There's some research I had intended to do on this particular policy when it came before the board, but was not aware it was coming forward until the agenda arrived on Friday.
Why don't you talk about it offline? So agenda item 5.05, Finance and Enrollment Report. We have our district accountant, Bill Hernandez, who's going to be joining us. And as he approaches, just for the benefit of those of you who are seeing this for the first time, and to speak to what Director Williams was mentioning earlier about so much of the work that we do to get ready for these meetings happens ahead of the meeting. Director Miller is our finance liaison and he meets regularly with Mr. Hernandez and Lori Cloud, our finance director and also Superintendent Hanson, to talk about all things budget, finance, and enrollment. And in this particular case, they met for more than an hour to go over this ahead of this meeting. So we want to thank you for all of that time. Thank you, Director Miller, for supporting us with that work. And I'll turn to review.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Director Hall. AJ, just sort of down to page two for me, please. Thank you. All right, starting off with the blue December actual column and the light blue year-to-date actual column. But let's start with revenue. December revenue came in at $10.4 million, coming year-to-date revenue up to $44.1 million, which is roughly 31% of our annual budgeted revenue. Like we said in prior meetings, again, this is overfunded because our year-to-date enrollment, our average year-to-date enrollment is higher than what we had initially budgeted. So as we stated previously, this will have to be refunded to the state beginning next month in January. Jumping over to the expenditure side of things, December expenditures came in at $11.2 million, which is $269,000 less than what we had budgeted, primarily driven by less certificated salaries expenditures. Jumping over to that red budget versus estimate column, focusing on certificated salaries, see that minus $2.7 million, as we stated during the prior board meeting, the prior finance portion of the board meeting, minus $1.1 million came from lower-than-budget average-based contracts for certificated staff. The additional minus $1.7 million was added for this meeting, and that is primarily driven by lower-than-budget non-contracted and stipend expenditures. For those of you who aren't aware, non-contracted and stipend expenditures include things like conferences, committees, special projects, things that haven't taken place because of COVID and did not take place last year because of COVID. Assuming that these trends continue for the remainder of the school year, we estimate that minus $2.8 million in cert expenditures is going to be accurate. Now, taking a step back, if you take a look at our revenue, our estimated revenue of minus 5.1, that is entirely offset and is by the, by minus $6 million in expenditures, which means at the end of the day, we are estimating an end-of-year fund balance of plus $1.8 million or given us a total of $26.2 million for the year. Now, AJ, if you can go down to page six for me. Want to talk about other funds really quickly? For the majority of the, of the other funds, we haven't seen any changes or pretty stable for the month of December, with the exception of debt service fund. You can see there that there, yeah, expenditures of $11.5 million, that was anticipated, happens every December. We had $8 million of matured bonds that we paid out as well as $3.5 million of bond in this. The remaining $3.4 million in expenditures that you see there have been paid out in June as part of years. I know there's lots that I don't have questions.
Director Paganelli, do you have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. One, a comment I want to share with the board that Mr. Miller and I, as liaison to the finance, had a nice conversation after the last board meeting, between board meetings somewhere. So I appreciate it and want to say thank you for that extra time dedicated to that. I'm, I'm, I have to admit, and I still wrestle with and want to make sure I have a complete understanding of, back on page two, was in the estimated column for revenue- of, back on page two, within the estimated column for revenues, that we are attempting in that number to capture what you described as still embodied in year-to-date actuals of reduced revenue due to reduced enrollment. Is that what's happening in that number?
That's correct.
Okay. So when that time comes, we hopefully have already embodied it in this budget versus estimate column. It may not be exact, but we've made a strong estimate towards that. Okay, thank you. That's what I just wanted to really be crystal clear, that we won't see an additional adjustment that we feel like we dialed that in pretty well. I also want to celebrate an $8 million matured bond. That's a big deal. That's a really big deal. So I appreciate you pointing that out. We, on the COVID-related expenses page, I don't know, we don't have page numbers, so I apologize, I can't direct to AJ, it's towards the end and it's a landscape page. And there we go. The resources for that, I know we started this journey as a board, trying to capture that so we would have, not knowing what was coming, right, be able to capture and anticipate. And then we have received ESR funds or other funds that I'm not sure I have a direct line of sight as to how those ESR funds need to be applied versus what we've been capturing as COVID expenses. So if you have any remarks there relative to the funds that we've received for quote COVID purposes versus what we've been diligent about capturing as COVID expenses, that would be helpful.
Yep, absolutely. So I take a step back and look at the total COVID expenditures to date. Take a look at 2021, total comes out to $2.1 million. For the 2122 school year, about $400,000, four months into the school year. And if you were to go back to the August financial report, you'd see that 2019, 2020 expenditures came out to a little bit over a million dollars. So million plus 2.1 plus four, that's $3.6 million total spent since March of 2020. As in terms of ESR dollars, to date, to date, we received $284,000, which means $284,000 minus $3.6 million we, as a district, have paid out around August, $3.3 million to cover all COVID expenditures to date.
Because I think it's relevant. We anticipate having access to ESR funds around $2.6 million that must be spent by the end of next year. But we also anticipate that the expenditures will be well north of $5 million. And we've shared at least once before with the board, we hear a lot in the news about ESR funds and school districts being rich with all this cash coming in. Tohoma School District was definitely not ESR fund winner, I guess, for lack of a better way to put it. We are the second least funded school district in King County per student in terms of ESR funds. The only district receiving less per student than Tohoma was Mercer Island. We are getting it, Director Pagnelli's question, we're definitely tracking. We will have no problem spending all of the ESR funds. Unfortunately, COVID is actually costing us a lot more money than we're getting support from the federal government.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you so much, Bill. We appreciate you joining us tonight.
Thank you, Bill.
We will move on to Agenda Item 6.01, which is action to approve our consent agenda. May I please have a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.01, action to approve our consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Director Miller motioned and Director Wiggins seconded. Thank you. I will call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Agenda Item 6.01, action to approve our consent agenda passes 4 to 1 with Director Pagnelli voting nay. Agenda Item 6.02, action to approve the minutes of the January 11, 2022 board meeting. May I please have a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.02, action to approve the minutes of the January 11, 2022 board meeting?
I move to approve the minutes of the January 11, 2022 revised board meeting. Second, same.
Director Miller motioned and Director Wiggins seconded. Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
Madam President, I'm just reflecting on the board director reports. And I wanted to make sure that my report was complete in that I did announce my resignation effective February 28 with the openness to retract that offer, which is shown as viable through policy. So I'd like that reflected in the minutes, okay?
Tamara, did you capture that? Are there any other comments? I will go ahead and call for the vote, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda Item 6.02, action to approve the minutes of the January 11, 2022 board meeting passes 5 to 0. Agenda Item 6.03, action to approve the minutes of the January 18, 2022 board meeting. May I please have a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.03, action to approve the minutes of the January 18, 2022 board meeting?
I move to approve the minutes of the January 18, 2022 special board meeting. Second, same.
Director Miller motioned and Director Wiggins seconded. Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Since there's no discussion, I will call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda Item 6.03, action to approve the minutes of the January 18, 2022 board meeting passes 5 to 0. Agenda Item 6.04, action to approve our certificated personnel report. May I please have a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.04, approval of our certificated personnel report?
I move to approve our certificated personnel report as revised. Second, same.
Director Miller motioned and Director Wiggins seconded. I will call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Agenda Item 6.04, approving our revised certificated personnel report passes 5 to 0. Agenda 6.05, action to approve our classified personnel report. May I please have a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.05, approval of our classified personnel report?
I move to approve our classified personnel report as revised.
Director Miller motioned and Director Wiggins seconded. I will call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Agenda Item 6.05, approving our revised classified personnel report passes 5 to 0. And that brings us to Agenda Item 6.06, action to approve our coach personnel report. May I please have a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.06, approving our coach personnel report?
I move to approve our coach personnel report as revised. Second, the motion.
Director Miller motioned and Director Wiggins seconded. Thank you. I will call for the vote.